We will.
Sorry.
We will assume positive intent, but raised voices hostility, talking time chopping over another meeting participant or speaker. Raising previously included matters or business or non relevant issues will not be tolerated. Any individual who is warned and rightly in this regard will be declared to be out of order, may be centered and will be slightly asked to. So I'll go on to the approval of the order of the agenda. In line with Brian Cook's suggestion, I proposed in the director and president's reports. To follow the board administration finance sections to allow our financial guests to speak.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I'm.
Thank you for that. Does anyone see a need for an executive session? No? Okay. Ask for executive sessions.
Jen?
Yes.
If I may raise a point of order, the only microphone we have is on my laptop. There weren't enough. USB ports on my laptop to get the standing mic to work. So if you can just speak up. Thank you.
Okay, I'll do my very best. Um, to move to board administration acceptance of the minutes of the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Any concerns with the minutes? Okay, we'll note those as. Um, Brian, if I may turn to you. We have Darren, great. Um, if you could make the introduction. And we'll walk them through the oath of office. Just to point order, Bob, do we have a notarized copy of the oath?
No, uh, the instructions to Darren were to sign it and have it notarized after the oath is administered. Send it to me so that I can file it to the with the county clerk.
Okay. Do you want to go there?
Yeah, this is Darren Ivey. Partner at Rocky Smith. And um, the uh, the last one we've discussed to introduce is how um, some something new treasure for us. Darren, why don't you speak to your resume a little bit more, a lot of experience and. Thanks for nonprofits and libraries.
Yeah, sure. Thanks for. Thank you for having us coordinating. Kyle is actually on this call as well. He's our supervisor and Kyle and I. Work with a lot of our library clients in this capacity, providing treasurer and internal control. Consulting services. So um. We have a number of clients that we do exactly what we're going to be doing for for Chapua. So we're very happy to have been introduced to you. Uh, and then along the way, actually, just a quick look at. Um, what Jeffrey's going to present to you and draft, you know, the management letter points are certainly. Things that will strengthen your internal control structure and and you know, we can uh. Um, keep an eye on the corrective action plan that'll be attached to those two recommendations that are in that report that he'll talk about. Um, but we know um. If there's questions along the way, we're certainly um designing our services to be uh of assistance to your business office and to be able to report to you. Um, we'll provide you with a monthly board packet with meaningful information so you can make some, you know, the decisions you have to make. Um, in reviewing the uh. You know, your financial position from month to month. So um, if you have any questions at any point in time, certainly um. You know, reach out to us directly or indirectly and we'll certainly respond as quickly as possible to you.
Oh.
Kyle, do you? I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Want to introduce Kyle?
I do. I think he's in attendee mode. But Robert, is there a way to make him a panelist so he can join?
I'm afraid I'm afraid I don't have that ability.
But you can't allow.
Oh, yes, I do. There's an allow to talk button.
Yes.
Get that. Here he comes.
To the right, if you could video.
Darren, you could mention briefly, one service we're excited to avail ourselves over time. You have multiple library clients and you're tracking who's getting wanted and and where the risks are and and. Some things that we can tighten it to tighten up.
Yeah, one of the things in our space that we'll certainly provide to is, you know, what we learn. Um, out in the library universe as emerging risks or just past risks that we've experienced, we want to keep an eye on that for you. Um, we've had clients that have gone through state audits that were successful and some that were, you know, a little painful. So what we've learned there, we want to. Your attention. Um, we track what the state does from uh library. And um, village and school district audits, I'm sure just firm does the same thing to keep a, you know, our clients abreast of what's going on and give a head start. Uh, in those particular areas um and what those challenges are. So we will bring them to your attention. Um, some of those areas we designed in our engagement letter for you uh to assist in um. Getting ahead of the curve with those things. And I think one of your management other points is is about uh, you know, looking at payroll change reports. Um, so that's something that we would, you know, suggest as well, and we can show you how to do that and be a part of that with you. Um, and um, we also see a lot of cybersecurity. You know, assessments that are required or that are suggested at this point in time. As an outgrowth of that, we do cybersecurity internal audit reviews. We have a cybersecurity auditor on our staff. Um, so we're here to help where the needs come at any point in time, as well as the fundamental. Point of reviewing your bank statements, making sure you have accurate financial reporting. Um, on a month to month basis, right? The bank statements are really the, you know, the golden. Um, key control that you want to make sure accurate and timely that you're seeing each month. Um, which you're used to getting from your prior treasurer as well. So we'll keep that ball rolling. We think we we did redesign the treasures report a little bit for you. Uh, to give you some information we thought was useful. Since it is the first one you're going to see from us, we are open uh to your suggestions of what you like and don't like, and we'll get it to a spot where. Um, it works for you and and we're giving you information that we think is necessary.
Thank you.
Okay, so Kyle, we do see your name on the screen. So if you want to introduce yourself and free. I don't know if your camera's working or not.
Okay, I think I'm in now.
Do you want to talk a little bit about your background?
Yeah, sure. Um, so I'm a supervisor um here at the in the firm of Noraki Smith. Um, I've been auditing the school districts and libraries. Um, for over six years. Um, we do all different sizes of uh budgets for different, you know, entities. Um, so we've really seen a wide range and bring a lot of um expertise and things that pop up other places. Um, you know, we could, you know, definitely develop if we see something work somewhere else, you know, we bring that to all our clients. Um, so we really have a lot of um different areas that we look at and could bring, you know, a lot to the table of, you know, helping approve different situations.
Kyle got very high remark remarks from the reference checks and Chantel's been impressive.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, well, we know Darren that um you volunteered to serve as our official treasurer. Uh, may I administer the oath?
Sure. Yes.
Uh, if you can repeat that for me, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support.
I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Treasurer.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Treasurer.
At Apqua Central School District Public Library, a mouthful.
The chapter good. It's uh, Central School District Public Library, town of Newcastle and Mount Pleasant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
And I will get this notarized and turned back to you hopefully tomorrow.
Thank you.
If you can return that to Bob Conrad, that'd be pretty.
Will do.
Um. We do have some questions for you and Brian may already know the answers to these of. Will Darren and Kyle or Darren or Kyle participate in these meetings in terms of our regular meetings? Or will they uh review the financial presentation with Bob and yourself and then you'll speak to it?
The plan is for them to review them and close you to them at these meets. They're obviously available for us when we have questions.
Sure. Great. Okay. Um, one thing I wondered as well um is how the timings went work, you know, one of the difficulties is that. Meetings do vary in in terms of timing within a month. For example, this one's particularly early because of the election. Um, what's what's your typical timing that you would foresee for managing these financials?
Yeah, we we did see your meeting schedule and we would like to be on track to, you know. Timely reports to you where possible, where the business days allow for it uh between the end of the month and your your meeting date. Uh, some of them might be tight like this situation, right? So I think we have uh March, we don't have April for you, but your next month. Um. We're going, we're going to have April for you. Uh, what's the date of your next meeting? May? I don't have that in front of me, but. Um, I'm sorry, June um. Would you say twelve? So we, our goal is to get them as as timely as we can to with the, you know, for that particular month that just ended. Um, if we have difficulties with that because of just a short number of business days available to us before that meeting, we'll let you know in advance. Um, but we're going to be um, you know, as timely as we can uh so you have the most accurate information, you know, each and every month.
Great. Um, I have one more question. The audit recommendations provided were uh excellent and numerous, I think six or seven pages.
Oh. Those were from the state, by the way. Yeah, those we sent across, right?
Definitely. Uh. Will you work with us in that regard to identify where uh you think improvements needed?
We will. Um, as we get to know the operations a little better and interface with your team, um. We will um certainly when we see these opportunities come up or areas that we can uh suggest an improvement on. Um, you know, we will bring that to the table and uh discuss it. Um. And this, you know, emerging areas like we said that are um. Worth starting to consider to look at that might not come up in day to day operations on our end, but that is certainly of a cybersecurity end. You know, every organization out there right now really needs to assess how that's being handled. So um, you know, we would suggest doing something. Uh, having us look at that a little bit as well. But uh, you know, at first we just wanted to get right our nuts and bolts squared away as to what your financial reporting needs are. Um, and um. You know, do that transition between your prior treasurer and us and have the information to you. But as things come to our attention. We'll certainly bring them to bring them to your attention and, you know, we could put a punch list together and and address things over time. Sometimes it's, you know, some things are easy fixes and some things require a little dialogue and a long term plan.
All right. One thing um we may talk to you about as well would be some, you know, we'll be bringing on two additional trustees. It may make sense to have a special meeting where we. You know, really drill down into the financials and work to make sure everyone's at the same level.
Yeah, it's a great idea. Like everyone's on board. Um, happy to have that meeting with you and then also discuss some basic internal control necessities. So everyone's on the same page and just has an awareness of um. Where the risks are and to keep an eye out for them.
Great. Shall we move into the March report?
Yeah, did you want to or did Kyle want to go through?
Yeah, I'll kind of um go through it. Um, this is, you know, a template that we put together for you. Um. It has, you know, the information of where your current budget is, where your current expenditures are as of the end of March. Um, so. On page two, it's um a spreadsheet that we put together that has your budget. Um, in there for every line that is approved by the voters each year. Um, and the amounts listed um next to it. Um, so you have the two rows that have your actual budget and then you have your year to date expenditures. That is until the end of March, because this is the March report. Um, so everything that was paid out until the end of March from July first are included. Um, and then it gives you a column that tells you if you're over or under a budget and what percent of that budget has been expensed so far this year. Um. One thing that we do and I, you know, we put this together fairly quickly on the turnaround. Um, so I did make. Um, if you see, there's like numbers that have notes. So we usually try to keep track of different budgets that are. Um, a little bit more than like your current year. So the end of March is seventy five percent of your fiscal year. So if you'll see on the report, you you'll have those numbers of um any percent of budget that is above that. Um, sometimes there's perfect reasons for it. If it's something was paid out once a year and you're not going to be paying it again, it's going to show a high percentage. So we just note some of those things um in the notes to let you guys know why, you know, something's over budget or under budget. And then other times it just might be, um, you know, we recommend monitoring because you're getting a little high, you know, in one of the codes, but. This gives you a good summary of your whole budget that was approved and then all the current expenditures that you have in place total wise. Um, on page three, it has those notes that I referenced. So, you know, I typed in the different budgets that we, you know, recommend you looking at. Um, and kind of see, you know, how the expenses fell. And then on the right hand side of it, it is um. Your fund balance sheet. So it tells you at the top all your cash balances of your three bank accounts. So you know the amount of money that the library has um in those accounts. Um, some of your accounts payable. So, you know, bills that are booked that hasn't been a check, you know, cut yet. You know, it gives you that total. So you kind of know what kind of expenditures are out. Um, and then on the bottom, it's your fund balance. So it's broken up by how you have it designated. So you have your unrestricted net assets. Um, you have different assets of the board designated to hold off. You know, for different liabilities and things. Um, so that gives you a nice summary of. All the balances that you have according to your QuickBooks of what, you know, you have uh separated out. Um, and then the bottom, your total net income so far for the year. So the library gets all of their revenue upfront. I saw that right off the bat. Um, so that number would be higher just because you get all your revenue upfront and you don't get it like monthly. So, you know, when I first saw that number, you know, it jumped out, but then the explanation of getting all the money upfront made more sense. So, you know, that number. You have a question?
Multiple payments.
So in QuickBooks, it was registered once.
But they give us, they front load the first installment.
Mm hmm.
And then there's payments later on as well. You have different, how many installments a year do you get?
Uh, there, I think there's, I know September, I I believe uh September, November. And January, maybe? I'm not, I'm, we could get back to you on, but I believe there are three.
I I actually think it's September, October, no, excuse me, but it's. I think they actually all fall over and then once October is over. We would have to check the budget. There's a a fine page of the web based budget that explains when to anticipate um payments.
Okay, yeah, I saw um, I have your QuickBooks open. So uh July, August, September, October, and then one large one in December. That was this past current year. So by December, you had um, you know, your full year's uh revenue book for you.
Is it, whose responsibility is it to match from what the taxpayer agrees to what the school district transfers to us? Is that the audit or you guys or?
For the total dollar amount?
So what I'm asking is when the money, the money ultimately doesn't come directly to us, it's in these payments that are sent through.
Yep.
Those dollar amounts are based on the total levy, but are you guys? Who actually goes and looks at what New York State has on record that the library is supposed to receive and verifies that the school district gave the library a hundred percent of the money? Is that?
So you're going to see that on your end because you do the budget vote each year and you have a tax levy dollar amount for your next fiscal year. So then we compare that to the amount that came in. So if it's the same number that came in, then we're okay with that justification. That you received all the money from the school district.
So our outside accounting firm, you guys are going to own that piece of if we tell you the number we're expecting, you're going to make sure it comes in. We don't.
We just said we're to see the light. It's our responsibility.
We see it in our in in each of.
That's what I'm wondering is who's responsible? Sure. Percent of it, but I I think it should be our accountant is where I'm going with this. I just want to verify that they're comfortable with that.
We are going to report to back and if we see the discrepancy. That you haven't received it, it's on the first line of the the treasurer's report, actually, that we're, so if you look at page um. Um, two, after the cover page. Uh, on the revenue side, the fund revenues, the school district tax levy amount, three point four million. And we're, we're reporting in the in the third column, three point four million that you received it. So you received a hundred percent. According to. We'll we'll report this to you. If we see there's a discrepancy. We're going to talk to Robert and Chantal about that and interface, you know, about how to reconcile that. Yep.
Thank you.
You got it. So we'll report to you that on a month to month basis and if we ever see a discrepancy, it's going to be in our notes to to see why. And we'll be part of those discussions um and trying to reconcile that. That makes sense where you're answering your question?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep, you got it.
Um, so after um page three on our report, um after that is um page four, five. Uh, six, seven, and eight are um reports that are generated directly out of your QuickBooks, which is your accounting software. Um, so we pull those reports directly out of QuickBooks. There's no, there's no entry that we're doing physically. Um, it's generated right from the accounting software. Um, so that is what is recorded um in your books. Um, it gives you the uh balance sheet first, which has uh all your assets. Uh, all your liabilities, the fund equity. Um, all of that is listed. That's where I get all that information on page two where we summarize everything. Um, we get from between the balance sheet and then a profit and loss um that we generate for you that has. Every income that came in and every expense going out and what code um all of those hit. So. It's more detailed and you could look, flip through that. And if there's any questions with any of those. Um, you know, maybe expenditure wasn't coded properly, you know, we could dive into QuickBooks, see what it was, make an adjustment, you know, during the year. Um, so that's where you'll be able to see those balances and um. Uh, verify all that information. So we include that also. So it gives you a nice tool to look into all the different odd codes.
Yep, and certainly if you don't feel like looking, ask us, we'll find the answer for you. Um, which is fine. We just wanted to provide you with information for those that want to dig further. Um, and uh, what's not in this report, which we will add. Um, is that we're going to be reviewing the bank statements that are prepared. Um, so we will make, you know, commentary in that regard that, you know, that they were accurate or we made a, you know, we suggested an adjustment or. Or so on. We just wanted to make sure that uh there's a second day review of your bank statements and your bank reconciliations. Um, because as we said before, that's really the key control to to running your operations over there, that those bank recs. Are done timely and accurately and we're a part of that uh review process. So. Um, when your audit time comes at your end, uh you can be confident that, you know, they've been um. Verified and accurate and, you know, certainly will make Jeff's life easier as well, knowing that that's been done.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, noteworthy thoughts?
Excuse me?
I was just happy if there was anything else to call to our attention in the March financials.
Um, I will say if if you have, I mean, you look at the reporting hole, is there, you know, is there any areas that? You know, you like the sections or maybe something added to it, or um do you feel like this, you know? Gives you all the information that you need so you're comfortable with, you know, the regular transactions. Um, you know, that happened in whatever month, you know, we do the treasurer's report.
Once we're all, once we're all caught up and and you guys are familiar, a little more familiar, then we can start to tweak the recording a little bit.
You got it. Absolutely. Looking forward to that feedback.
Oh, I I forgot. One thing I wanted to ask your opinion on, um, Brian and I talked about cash versus accrual accounting, your your thoughts there?
So what's your, what's your question? Uh, what do you, your? Excuse me, I'm trying to find.
That are moving to accrual accounting um rather than what we're currently using and I assume most libraries are using cash as well.
Uh, that's what we are seeing. Um. Let me, I'm trying to find your financials.
I want to bias your response, so I'll let you.
Kyle, in the in the, I just want to back up to our other reports that we're issuing to other clients. They're on a cash basis.
No, they're all on accrual.
On accrual, okay.
So you're, yeah, I mean, Jeffrey, I maybe you could chime in, but your financials are presented you on a cruel basis.
So I I was gonna, you guys are stealing my thunder, but um. So. When you, when you do your fund accounting. Um, your general fund and your capital fund, you you're using uh what we were, what we refer to as modified accrual accounting. So. Um, it's near term inflows and outflows of financial resources. So you would book a receivable if it was going to come in in the near term. You would book prepaid expenditures, you would book um payables in the normal course. Uh, what you wouldn't book in the general fund is your other post employment benefit liability that, well, you know, the big, the big liability. Um, that. That gets recorded only on on the full accrual statements because it's a long term item. So, and I'll and I'll kind of walk you through as I go through the statements. You're required, we're required to present both full accrual statements and modified accrual statements in in governmental accounting. So I'm kind of going to show you both, but typically the way it's done at the. Uh, managerial level is at the modified accrual basis. And, you know, then there's a conversion done to 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 show the the full accrual presentation. If that helps at all.
Yeah, so we noticed with your prior treasurer, it was all the cash basis um reporting. So in QuickBooks, you have only two options, whether it's either accrual or cash uh basis when you print and report. So. Or cash uh basis when you print and report, so. When we run our reports, um we do the accrual. Um because anything that you enter is this year's, you know, uh revenues or expenditures going out. So out of QuickBooks, we're printing the accrual to be most accurate to. You know, your financial statements or that piece of modified accrual, so. Um any reports that you see from us, we print out on the accrual basis out of QuickBooks.
Forgive me, procedurally, we didn't do a motion to approve Darren, we have. A provenance accepted the proposal, the financial proposal, and we've administered the oath. Motion as well.
So to let, oh, you'll make the motion, okay.
So we're very discussed, um the Rocky Smith. So I'd like to make a motion that the board approved the Rocky Smith as new treasurer of the John Quan Public Library. Darren Yakabelly.
Motion is for Darren to be our treasurer.
Darren, Aaron Belly as a treasurer of the John Quan Public.
I second it.
I have a little bit of concern that he won't be at our meeting, um. I think there's a different level of responsibility when you speak to your own work at the table. I would prefer that he be here to do that, I don't think it's a deal breaker for for him being the treasurer, but I would. Consider that in the future, if we can get back to a steady third Tuesday meeting that we. At that point, ask them to participate in that.
Yeah, we, you know, we can accommodate what needs to be done, that that's not a problem, I mean, uh we're gonna, I'm just. We're gonna dial in this way on a Zoom call and it'll be treasurers on the agenda for however long to discuss the um. The monthly report, is that what you're looking for?
Well, any questions we have, I know you guys will be very responsive. I wouldn't be concerned about that.
So we'll move forward and see if we think we need that modification. Um so for now, we have a second, all in favor? Anything else or no Rocky Smith? Uh where are we in terms of the bills?
Well, Kyle's still here, uh this morning he was able to present. Prepare for me a bill summary and a detailed report. And I have those available, but we didn't have them made twenty-four hours before the meeting. So I can either pull them up. And you can look at them, uh whether or not you can approve them is open to your understanding of. Um the open meeting law, I wouldn't recommend it, I think that we would need. Either a special meeting uh to be scheduled for later in the month. I hate to drag you back or a quorum of you back.
Planning on a June one meeting, it's not a, it's a little long for me, but um. Do be reminded that the uh. Print approved maintenance costs, utilities, et cetera, you don't need to be delayed by this because they are can be regret. We should be mindful in that regard, but for anyone. The credit card is the big one that all of this has a late fee if we don't get to it, I don't want it still.
Okay. Well, it fortunately, this meeting is very early in the month. Um so. If if we're not approving the bills to be paid except for the routine bills, then I can go ahead and. Do that tomorrow. And meanwhile, you'll have the report uh because it's already ready, Kyle prepared it today, I can email that out tomorrow.
It looks like the credit card and late fee would be an issue, just let us know, I mean, especially that.
Showing them to the audit report? Darren, Kyle, you're welcome to stay on, um but we thank you for your previous vision of today.
Thank you.
Kyle, I'm gonna stay on and listen in and we can catch up later.
Okay, sure. You're welcome.
So I'm on?
Late entry, was Jeff already, Jeffrey already introduced?
So Jeff, let's introduce you.
Okay, um. My name is Jeff Gager. Hi Liz. Yes, yes.
You've been doing our accounting for several years, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact number, but you've been very proficient. And we are glad to have you back, welcome.
Thank you, yes, I think it's been um. Since twenty eighteen, I believe I was hired, um. The firm was hired to be the auditors, um the director at the time, I believe, was Pam. Um yeah, and we've been, we've been uh, we've been coming back ever since. I work out of the, our Harrison office, uh not too far away, I live in Way Plains. We also have an office in Hop Dog, um. And we have other offices all, you know, through the, through the northeast, all the way up to Boston, uh down to the DC area. And the firm is um over a thousand employees at this point. Um but I work out of the public sector group in our Harrison office and. We handle almost a hundred percent local governments, mostly in this, you know, the lower Hudson region, so. Um we're heavy in in Westchester County, Putnam. Uh Rockland Orange is where most of our clients are, I do speculate in local government, so. Towns, villages, schools, libraries, fire districts, counties, um all those sorts of things. Um with that, I'd like to just jump right into the draft financial statements and take you. Through them and hopefully answer any questions you might have, is it okay if I share my screen?
Do you suppose if I make you a co-host, you'll be able to share your screen?
I think that would work.
Try that.
How's that?
Good news, it's it's working.
Okay, excellent. So we have a forty-four page document here, I I I don't, I wanna take up too much of your time, so I'm not gonna go through. Everything, I'm just gonna hit some of the highlights. The the most important highlight is is on, you know, the, one of the first pages here, the independent auditors report. Um and it's a three-page opinion, but essentially what we're saying here in the in the very beginning of the opinion. Um we're, we'd be rendering uh an unmodified opinion. And it's also referred to as a clean opinion, and that's the most favorable opinion uh that you can receive. What that means is the numbers that I'm presenting here tonight that are in this. Draft document um are fairly stated in all material respects. Keep in mind, um the clean opinion doesn't mean that your numbers are favorable, or it doesn't mean that they're unfavorable, it just means that. They're fairly stated, so they're, in in other words, they're accurate and the note disclosures are complete and consistent. So to jump right into the numbers, I, we were talking before uh about the modified accrual basis of accounting. Uh because you're a local government. I'm sorry, did I, did someone ask a question? Okay, sorry, um I was talking about the modified accrual basis of accounting, and this is the the general fund and its budget. And it is presented on the modified accrual basis of accounting, so if you purchase a capital asset, if you were to. Build a, add, do a renovation on the library or something like that. Here you would record it as an outflow of resources or an expenditure, so that would reduce your fund balance. On a full accrual statement, you wouldn't expense that type of item, uh you would call it an asset and depreciate it over. Um the life of 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 the asset. Um. And long-term revenues would not be recorded, um only only near-term inflows of of resources would be recorded. And this kind of mirrors, it's more important to most local government governments because it mirrors their adopted budget. And you can see, we also, you you also asked about the real property taxes. And um whose responsibility it would be, it is something we always check as auditors. Um even though I I do agree that it would be an internal or or management function to be checking these numbers. But you can see when the twenty twenty-two budget was adopted. It was anticipated three million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars would be received for real property taxes, and that's what you received. Um. And we checked to make sure you're you're actually receiving all those dollars from from the school district. And that they matched the budget and you see the variance column is here, uh which was zero. There's some other revenue items, small revenue items, interest, some fines. A little bit of state aid and some miscellaneous income, bringing you to a total revenue budget of three million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand. Uh actual revenues collected for the year were three million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand. Or about thirty-one thousand greater than was anticipated. On the expenditure side of the budget or the appropriation side. The budget called for expenditures of three million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand. Your actual expenditures were slightly less than that, three million, one hundred and eighteen thousand. Or about a hundred and forty-four thousand less than what was anticipated being spent. You can see there's a positive variance in the salaries, personal services category, which is your salaries. Um and a little bit in the employee benefits, thirty-six thousand, you did overspend a little bit on the contractual line, about twenty-two thousand. And that brings you to the net amount um underspending of the budget, a hundred and forty-four thousand, five thirty-one. In addition to those expenditures, you also adopted ninety thousand dollars to be put over into the, into the capital fund or the capital reserves. Um. You actually, were actually transferring three hundred and ninety thousand, and that was um. Reduced from the original amount of, I think, four hundred and ninety thousand, because. Um if you did the, if you did the entire four hundred and ninety thousand, that was initially discussed earlier in the year. It would have thrown the unassigned fund balance into a negative, so that's what the um, my conversation with uh Brian. Uh yielded uh about a month or so ago, and I believe he presented that to the, to the trustees um at the last meeting. So after taking the revenues, um less the expenditures and the other financing uses or transfers out. Of three hundred and ninety thousand brings you to a decrease in the fund balance of a hundred and twenty-four thousand. Keep in mind, there's a decrease in the general fund, but it was a result of moving the money over to the capital fund, not not overspending or. Um spending more than your budget. So you started the year at two hundred and thirty-one thousand of fund balance, general fund only, end the year at a hundred and seven thousand. I just wanna skip here, this is your general fund and capital projects fund combined together, so you can see on the balance sheet here. One hundred and seven thousand is the total general fund, fund balance. It's made up of these four categories um to indicate the type of. Uh restrictions or non-restrictions that you have on those dollars, there's twenty-nine thousand of non-spendable fund balance. Um which is essentially your prepaid expenditures, that means that fund balance is not in spendable form, you, the cash already left the door, you can't spend it again. There's some restricted funds, which is, in the case of um of Capocqua, is some donor restricted funds of forty thousand dollars. Some committed funds or or board, board designated, if you will, of about twenty-three thousand, and that leaves you with the remainder. Uh what we call unassigned fund balance or residual of fund balance. Of fourteen thousand dollars, and that's not encumbered, restricted in any way, and not set aside for capital. So in the second column here, you'll see what's been. Um transferred over and kept into the capital projects fund, and that amount is one point one million. So you can see at the end of the year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand is your total uh fund balance for the year. And then I just wanted to also show you. This is a uh income statement for the general fund. Combined in with the capital projects fund, so you can see, these are the actual revenues and expenditures for the general fund, as I mentioned on the first page. And this is what happened in your capital projects fund, you moved into three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um but there was very little in the way of expenditures, about twenty thousand dollars during the year. So you can see net between the two funds of the library, fund balance increased by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. From nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand up to one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand. Now I'm gonna switch gears a little bit and talk about the full accrual basis of accounting. Uh what we do here is take those two funds together. And we add in your long-term assets, which in your case would be uh capital assets. You know, the improvements they've done to your building and equip, any equipment you purchased uh with a useful life greater than one year. And add in long-term liabilities, which in your case um is your other post-employment benefit liabilities. And that's what most of this three point four million dollars is here down in the non-current liability section. Um we also add in a small amount for compensated absences. Or future payments that are gonna be made to employees when they uh leave or retire from the library. And deferred outflows and deferred inflows of resources are pension-related items that are long-term in nature. And they kinda stand outside of the assets and the liabilities, so you can see. Comparing the general fund and capital fund balance sheets to this balance sheet. Or what we refer to as a statement in net position, does give quite a a a different picture of. Of what's going on in the library. You can see that the net position unrestricted or the residual on uh net position is a negative amount. And that's two million dollars, that doesn't mean that the library is insolvent and can't pay its bills. What that means is is it has long-term obligations, um that it will fund as. As the time comes, as as the those payments are required to be made, you don't budget. Currently for retiree health insurance payments, you budget for those payments when you're gonna be making those. And that's what this long-term liability represents, uh future payments that will be made for health insurance, uh retirees. Um that that have already been earned, so that's what causes the the un-unrestricted deficit to be. Uh two million dollars in this case. So there's a lot of other disclosures in here, there's some supplementary information. Towards the back that get, that shows some comparative information, some greater detail. Um in the interest of time, I I'd like to just open it up to questions on the statements. Um and if there are no questions on the statements, I can move into the draft report to those charged with governance. So that's a separate document here. And I'm gonna go to the front. So. There's a few different things rolled into this um eighteen-page document. It's um some required communications about. Auditors' responsibilities and management's responsibilities, um about reasonableness of accounting policies. Journal entries that we as auditors made, uh we would be required to tell you here if we found any. Um instances of fraud or illegal acts, I'm happy to report that we didn't, we didn't find any. Um any compliance issues uh would be noted here, those sorts of things, unusual accounting policies. Um I don't wanna read you all the required communications, they do get lengthy and they're a little boring, but I I guess that, I guess my. Takeaway or my high-level, my high-level presentation of it is everything is pretty much. Um ter- is standard in terms of the required communications. So that's where we, you know, have a few pages here. Um about all different sorts of things that I mentioned, um nothing that I need to bring to your attention as being. Concerning or or bothersome to me in any way. With that said. Um there's also the part of the letter where we, you know, give some uh feedback or criticism, if you will. On how to improve um your operations. And also we would be required to tell you if we identified any deficiencies in your internal controls. That we consider to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We didn't find any of those type of um deficiencies, uh just a few um minor recommendations. That um hopefully Darren and his team will work with you um. you know, to, 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 uh, to fix, uh, in the current year and, um, hopefully move forward. But just to talk briefly about those. It's, uh, fund accounting. So you noticed in the financial statement document, there's the general fund presented separately from the capital projects fund. Um, however, the QuickBooks file, and you might've seen it when you looked at the treasurer's report. The QuickBook file shows all, two of the funds, um, combined together. So if, if, in, in your case, actually the, the capital projects fund is an optional fund. Um, the board previous to this board or possibly two boards previous had decided to establish that. They wanted to keep it those, the capital fund activities in a separate fund as to, um, not distort the general fund budget. Um, because that keeps, it allows that all your capital expenditures to be outside of your budget. And that kind of distort your actual expenditures compared to that budget. So I think that's really the, that was really the main reason why that was established. But if you're going to do that, you really should have two separate QuickBooks files, one for the general fund, one for the capital projects fund. And that's what the first comment is about. The second comment is about, um, internal controls, specifically about payroll change reports. Um, while we did note there is review of payroll, just wanted to make that clear. There is a review of payroll. Um, it's just a, a kind of a best practice, uh, um, possibly an improvement to every pay period to have, have, um, someone review, um, all the changes that are produced from the payroll system. So that, that way, if somebody's pay increased or pay decreased or withholdings changed or anything changed from period to period, someone would be easily ident, able to identify what those changes were and determine if they were appropriate. Um, not to get in too much into journal entries, but we did record a few journal entries. Uh, this was the transfer between the capital, I mean, sorry, the general fund and the capital projects fund of 300,000, um, in addition to the 90,000. Also involved with this was the, the manual process that we did was having to separate the capital projects fund out from the general fund. Hence the, the recommendation that we made. Um, that's really all I had in terms of prepared remarks. Um, I realize there's a lot. You know, a lot that I, a lot of information that I presented to you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to try and answer them. If there's anything you want me to go into in more detail, uh, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Thank you, Jess. I, um, I was here for when you made the recommendation that we break out that fund. And I was here last year when I confirmed we had done it, but apparently our intern, like our, our QuickBooks hadn't gotten there yet. So I'm glad you found that for us and we will, I'm sure, make that adjustment on this end. Um, and that will be nice to have that closed out for, I think, two years forward. Uh, so thank you for that.
So you do continue to recommend a separate capital projects fund as long as we implement separate QuickBooks?
Yes, I, I, it, my personal preference because when you start having significant capital projects activity and you have to put, and if you leave it in the general fund, it distorts your general fund expenditures. And it's hard to, from year to year, saying, oh, no, we spent, oh, 300,000 on, on a roof. Or we spent 400,000 on a parking lot or whatever you did, to see that with the rest of your, your recurring operating expenditures makes it a little harder to analyze that general fund. So is it required? No, it's not. You could, you could say, you know what, this board could say, it's easier just to put them together and put them back together. I do have some library clients that do it that way. So certainly I don't have an issue with that. It's just, if you're going to do it, you should, if you're going to keep the two funds, you should keep with the two funds. That's the recommendation.
If you, if you didn't have it separate, can you still ask the taxpayer for separate money for your capital? Or at that point?
You still could. Um, it, instead of it hitting a, a transfer outline, it would just be like a movement on the balance sheet. Like from one, you know, from unassigned into a restricted category or committed category. So it would be like, you wouldn't, you wouldn't see it hitting, hitting the, uh, budget or the income statement, if you will, if you did it that way. It would just be like shuffling around the equity. It's also easier to see, to, to, to your, to your point, I think. It's easier to see how much you're, you're setting aside for capital when you do it separate. Cause it shows us that transfer out. Without that separate capital fund, it kind of gets lost a little bit.
And you, uh, we had a phone call where you spoke to what would be recommended timing, you know, as we move forward. And we talked about unfortunately in 2022, the Gatsby actuarial report was delayed. Um, for the benefit of the full board, can you speak to, you know, sort of what the ideal would be?
So the year end is June 30th. Obviously it has to work for both sides in terms of scheduling, but you know, we would normally come in to do our fieldwork late September, early October. And really be done probably by the end of the year. You know, maybe, you know, if it, if it, if there's something outstanding, maybe January. I think prior to this year, the latest we did was January. So I think that would be, um, you know, within six months of year end, I think would be, um, would be a good goal to set on both sides.
You had a great track record for that. I think we hit January 19th multiple years in a row.
Yeah, January, I think was the latest, um. And then, you know, there was just a turnover this year and, you know, and the, and the, uh, the actuary report was delayed and it just, just didn't happen this year. I mean, hey, you know, I, I I have audits outstanding that are far older than this one. So I wouldn't say you're, you know, egregiously far behind. But you, you know, we just trailed, trailed like a few months back, you know, more than we have in the past. So we'd like to, we would, I would like to be in front of you in January or, or December, you know, in the future.
And so what's the preferred timing for the report from Dan's remark? The actuary?
We would have it in October. Or shortly thereafter. I mean, you know, as long as we have it by November, even early December, you know, um, we could turn it around in a reasonable amount of time, you know, even if it came in early December for us to get here in January, probably worked for us. But I would ask for, I would ask for it in October, by October, you know. And they, but they need information from you. You know, they're going to, they're going to ask, they need X, Y, and Z to, to, for them to be able to do what they need to do. So getting on, on the same page with them and making sure they have what they need from you, so they can produce what they need, so we can have what we need uh, to wrap everything up. Um, maybe a quick discussion with them just to make sure they can meet those, those timelines.
Um, so shall we, do you want to make a motion relevant to your draft report, Brian?
I would like to make a motion that the board approves the PKF O'Connor Davies, June 30, 2022 audit financial report.
Please sign. Scan.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussions? All in favor? I, I.
Great. Can you sign this? Thank you. Okay, great.
Wonderful. Jeffrey, anything else for us?
Just, um, it's still in draft form now that you've approved it. Um, Robert, I'll send over what we, what we refer to as management representation letter. Uh, would be the last piece of the audit to, you know, for you to sign. Um, in the past, I think I used, I used to have you and and the treasurers, I, I can't remember. I'll check what I, what we did last year, um, on the signatures.
The director and the president.
Okay. So the director and the president, we asked to sign, um, as the last, you know, um, part of the audit. And then we can release everything as final.
Great, thanks. I look forward to receiving that.
Okay, great.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for joining us this evening.
It was my pleasure.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you for yours of service.
My pleasure.
Okay, um.
Good night, everybody. I was, this is Darren. I was just listening and, uh, take care, Jeff. We'll talk to you soon.
You too, Darren.
Okay, in terms of the president's report, I just wanted to make a few comments. Uh, Bob Conrad spoke at the, um, CCSD Board of Education meeting and presented our budget. The questions received were actually all from the education. Um, and I think ably answered any, any commentary in that regard, Bob?
Uh, no, but just that Warren's question seemed to also contain a recommendation
Yes.
to increase, um, the, the budget expenditures for maintenance. But I looked into that and we're coming in under on that line. Um, so I don't think we need to follow that recommendation at this time. Yeah.
Well, it, it certainly was good to know that we have their support for ongoing maintenance of, of the structure that is in effect their property.
Right.
Okay. Uh, and the budget notice mailer and annual report went out the day afterward. Um, so everyone in the community should be, should have or should be receiving that. Um, the next big event, uh, will be the election on Tuesday, May 16th. And the election will be held at the high school gym from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So hopefully most of the community can get out to vote. We have two, um, strong candidates, um, George Bennett, a former educator with CCSD and John Harris, a current educator. Um, and we hope the community will voice their support relative to both candidates. Um, and this group will next work, I think Pam and I are going to work on preparing and onboarding a presentation for the new trustees. Um, and Bob will enlist your assistance in that regard. And that's really all I've got. She'll return to you, Bob.
Sure, I'd like to present, uh, my long-range plan update, but I need to pull it up in order to share it on screen. It was not ready at the time that the, um, board packet went out. Of course.
So while you look for that, this is an update to your earlier presentation in February of 2023. The last quarterly report, right, Tom?
That's right. And what I'd like to say to begin with is that certain rather than turning it into an additive report where, um, all of the last updates are, uh, snowball with current updates. I actually removed older updates except where, as were needed. This is most embarrassing.
Do you want to keep looking for that? And Pam can catch us up on Friends in the meantime?
That's good, yeah.
Please, Pam. Thank you.
Okay, so Friends is having their, their book sale, the Friends of the Chakravarti Library Book Sale. This year it's May 15th through May 21st, 2023. It is their biggest fundraiser of the year. And so please mark your calendars for bringing in books, May 15th and 16th. And then be ready to buy the 17th through the 21st. Thank you. Please go to Friends website to sign up to volunteer.
Do want the Friends, no, the curtain is up too.
And we can, and Friends, yes.
Was actually cut down.
Oh, is that what?
I, I don't know if you remember the exact date, Bob or Pam, but, um, the length and the date on the curtain, I want to say it was 1770. There's some, some crazy early date, so.
Seventeen?
Seventeen seventy?
Eighteen years.
Oh, nineteen.
No, nineteen seventy.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm like, I don't think curtains were invented then.
Right, they're running around with muskets.
Right, right.
Sorry.
It's pretty old.
That is, that's amazing.
Okay, opened the report. I would just like to do a share screen here in case anyone would like to follow along from home. And there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, everybody, and for stepping up to fill in on my down moment. So as I was saying, the new upgrades appear as blue text and where I had to retain an older update for context or simply to mark completion of a metric, it appears parenthetically. So if you aren't already familiar with our strategic plan priorities, they fall into five broad categories, diversity, equity and inclusion, community engagement, library services and sustainability and space and infrastructure. The first of those to champion equity, diversity and inclusion. We have a number of goals to be a warm and welcoming place for everyone, to be a center of inclusion, to reflect a diverse range of experience in our offerings and collection. And to audit those collections and offerings to ensure that they're diverse and equitable and inclusive. So a couple of, um, recent upgrades on these points is that we had previously formed a staff DEI committee. That committee continues to meet monthly. And although we're working on a, an ALA, American Library Association diversity checklist, it gets backburnered because other topics naturally arise. And we actually, for example, were discussing security needs of the library in the context of serving a diverse community. Um, we did complete a wheelchair accessibility audit. This is not a new update, but that audit is ready to now go to Buildings and Grounds Committee. As of today, I have a final report ready to share. I'll be passing that along. Um, warm, welcoming spaces and their accessibility are pretty much the reason uh, for our facade RFP, which Buildings and Grounds has been calling the facade RFP, which is to improve library exteriors. The courtyard and accessibility, I would say that accessibility of the courtyard is really the major thrust of this entire project.
Yeah, we're going to have to stop calling it the facade RFP and start calling it facade project.
Yeah, or calling it the courtyard.
We're past the.
Courtyard and, oh, okay, the facade project. We, I think we should call it the courtyard and facade project. It's hard to change names halfway through. Um, and as I was just saying, safety and security needs of an age and culturally diverse and public are at the forefront of our ongoing building safety improvements. Uh, which are reported on a little bit later in this very same update. Uh, we just recently added feminine hygiene products to four public restrooms. And collection and program staff continue ongoing efforts to offer diverse range of content, which you should see every month in the department reports on programs, although you don't really get a detailed report on the diversity of our book offerings. Um, there are a lot of those. Moving on though, the well, creating the audit is part of what I'm about to address. There's, there's not as simple of a tool as I had expected. Let me actually get to this slide and we'll start talking about it because the, the board didn't just give general goals. They came up with specific metrics, including to develop criteria for evaluating the diversity of the collection and programs. And what I'm finding in discussions with departments is that there's a current lack of professional peer-supported criteria for collections and programs. And that lack, we acknowledge and we support it. We, a lack because there's no cookie cutter approach for libraries. The, uh, the Brooklyn Public Library's needs are expected to be different from a rural community in Western New York.
So is the goal to meet diversity target? I don't know what those would be. Um, I guess there would be ethnicity uh, or racial makeup of the country more broadly, or is it the Chappaqua Central School District community? Is that what we should be targeting? What, you know, because that's, that's where customers are.
What I, what I think the metric really is that we get to develop that criteria. We get to decide, um, do we want the diversity of our collection to represent the community, the local community? Do we want it to represent the nation? We can set the criteria for evaluating and the standards we're trying to achieve. That's my current understanding of.
Does WLS have bad lines?
People paying the taxes to them.
Yeah, that, I feel like the board has work to do here because the librarians, they have their master's degrees and they're doing this every day for us for the last hundred years. And now someone said, oh, we need to look at this again and we need to do diversity, but what does that mean here is gonna you know, I think we should, the librarians keep doing their job unfettered by any kind of artificial kind of criteria because they're professionals, they're following the American Library Association, they're doing great stuff with this. Uh, and from where I'm sitting, I just picked up a book from Interlibrary Loan the other day that was from Iona. It didn't even come through Westchester Library System. It came from the New York State Library System. So as far as diversity of collection, it's really more about diversity of display because you can borrow a book from anyone's collection. And it's about equity of money. So I would like to see controlled readers for young children. We know that there's a population, one in five schoolchildren in a classroom. So if you have twenty kids in a kindergarten classroom, you know, five of them are neurodiverse. They have learning differences that will manifest and we don't really support them here yet. So that's my bent would be more in terms of what Pam's saying and what Brian's saying of looking at what our community needs and, and saying, listen, we can grab from the whole of Westchester, but we're gonna make sure that every year a certain percent of our budget is going to renew the books that are circulating because we know that fresher copies of Harry Potter increases circulation of Harry Potter. You know, all that sort of stuff has to be figured in.
Yeah, and I think what you've said, Liz, is essentially that we get, we not only get to, but according to this plan, we have to develop the criteria to evaluate the diversity of the collection, so.
So would you like us to, how would you like our assistance in that?
I, I think rather than relying on my, the, the professional staff's opinions, I think we need to convene a, a community forum that would represent needs like you just expressed. That's probably the best way forward.
Right, so, and we can look back at what our community told us, for example, that they do want more beach reads. So we do have competing interests here where we have a lot of people that want their nonfiction and we also want more beach reads.
I'm sorry, I'm just writing that down because.
I love that idea, Bob. It's a great idea because any place where we can get more of the community input and that's a great place because we're not talking about a specific book, we're just talking about a philosophy. And I think the librarians would welcome more feedback. I think they do a great job, but I don't think they're ever shy about asking patrons, what is it that you'd like?
Yeah.
That's one of our, part of our long range plans.
Now, the next metric to conduct a diversity audit of the library's collection and programming to determine a baseline analysis. I made all of these comments parenthetically, which means that I made them in the last report. We haven't advanced the conduction of an audit any further, but most of these are in a performed annually when we developed summer reading list in the children's department. And my comment that, that, that a, the idea of a correct percentage of the budget is not necessarily a recommended outcome um, according to our, our professional thinking. We als, we also have the metric to review the library's policies to address any biases or racially insensitive language. And I'll say that we've added diversity of programs in, and codified that into a new program policy that's under development. And that the policy committee meets regularly to do the work and we look for that kind of insensitive language in our policies and change it if we were to find it. And that the policy style guide and standing schedule of review are in development. I suppose our policy committee report might go into that further. So I'll move on to the second point to improve the library's community engagement.
Just, just, let's just hit on the highlights going through, or we're gonna be here till?
Okay.
Ten o'clock, no?
Oh, right. Library trustees and friends continue attending each other's meetings, although I don't see a friend here tonight. It, it has been fairly consistent. Uh, the school district and women voters' relationships were renewed during the election cycle. And I mean, I worked very closely with a couple of people that I had worked with before. It's very nice to see their professionalism and their support of the library. And the goal to solicit feedback and suggestions from the community, that is really at the forefront of the website project moving forward. And we're going to make sure that we have those abilities as that project launches and that we're thinking about it every step of the way. To, one of the metrics to actually complete is to develop an updated website that meets the needs of library patrons. And big news on this area is that the new website purchase was completed, the contract signed and accepted April seventh, April twenty-seventh, which was just not very long ago. So the project meeting and project timeline, um, I have a report in front of me. The meeting is scheduled for the week of May sixteen. And the timeline will be developed therefrom. I have a little bit more to say on that later on in the director's report. Okay, on the third, the third um broad area to provide and impactful library services, we did budget for professional staff and trustees to attend state and national conference. And the staff training needs were identified. We're subject of ongoing discussion and solution. By discussion and solution, I mean, we're looking for trainers now on those specific topics that we've identified the needs. Um, hoping to schedule things for the new fiscal year, uh, maybe able, I may even be able to to squeeze some other training topics in before the end of this fiscal year. So AV upgrades needed in the theater are extensive and they were the subject of a competitive RFP, which I'm hoping the board will be able to add at the meeting tonight. And I make the note that the projection screen quit after thirty-five years of operation. I did the math. I thought that it was installed with, when the building was new in nineteen seventy-seven. So it may have been an older screen installed, the older, that maybe they built the building around the screen. Anything's possible. Oops, I did not mean to skip ahead. So we're back onto the subject of the list of training topics. A number of those topics, well, all of the list was shared with WLS, but a number of those are things that they're looking to develop and expand into. And when we get to the point where theater space is adequate, I will invite them to perform those trainings right here. And I've also, WLS isn't the only agency I'm speaking to on the training topics. Civil Service actually came through with some good recommended. They don't have training on the subjects that I'm asking them for, but they recommended some some options. So if I'm just hitting the highlights, we'll talk about centering library around practices that are environmentally, socially, and financially sound. And I need to point out that the newly appointed treasurer gave us a list of the state controllers' frequent audit recommendations for public libraries and that we're considering those as we make the uh transition to a new treasurer. I would speak to another bullet point. Our audit, so not the new treasurer, our old auditor, he mentions two things, one of which I forget, but the other was to perform a payroll audit of changes to personnel. And we've actually implemented that in the last payroll. Just, just from having read that at the end of April in the audit recommendations, we're already making that change.
Bob, what does that mean in practice?
What it means in practice is that if one of our employees changes their tax withholding or their marital status and that changes their um their health insurance contributions. When we run the next payroll, it's gonna red flag it for my attention and say, there's been a change to how this person gets their payroll. That would also apply if somebody receives a, a wage or salary increase or suddenly starts receiving a bonus. Changes are flagged um, for my attention when I sign off on payroll.
Were they not flagged previously?
The they weren't flagged previously. Certainly everything that goes into a paycheck is part of the report that I sign off on.
Yes.
But changes were not flagged previously.
So there wasn't an easy way for you to see what changed payroll period to payroll period? And now you'll receive a report about everything that changed before you review the whole report?
You are correct. And, but I'll elaborate a little bit further and say the reason we hadn't been running those according to our payroll um processor is that there are very few changes. We make a lot of changes once upfront at the beginning of a fiscal year and then minor changes throughout the year. And so most payroll periods, we're expecting the report to say eh eh, nothing. But when there are changes now, I will be able to sign off on them.
It's a great improvement. Thank you.
Um, additional highlights.
The sustainability is with KGD and their um voiced um statement of commitment to sustainability in terms of the recommendations they'll be providing to for the facilities and courtyard product.
I'm going to retroactively add that to my report. Thank you. Um, other highlights, MRF filter upgrades were budgeted for, and I think they were authorized, so we're nearly implementing those. The new security camera, these are, these are in servicing the goal of addressing health and safety within the library environment. So the new security camera system is online and fully functional. The interior and perimeter access control system, that implementation is underway and so is the, an internal and external panic button system. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled, I, I believe, next week with a vendor to discuss a panic button system. Developing a comprehensive site plan that addresses the parking lot and outdoor space. This will be news to you because I didn't know it until this morning, but the date of the parking lot project were determined today. And they will be June, it's a Friday and the first Friday of June, which I think is the fifth. It's expected to take three days. It may run into four or five if there's rain or a need. It will not run longer than five. That sounds right. It shouldn't even take to the eighth, and if it does, surprise, it shouldn't run to the ninth either.
Right. Does this overlap with our, with our high school study hours or we're okay?
I don't know about high school study hours.
We normally open up the library at night during regents and uh, A and Ps, but.
I think, I think we're okay because. Then. The library will still be open. The building will be accessible through where will be free street parking through the length of the project. And um I've arranged that we can also have courtesy parking at the Episcopal Church of Saint Mary of the Virgin, our next door neighbors, and their driveway. I can check. The, the school district said we couldn't use Bell School parking, but they probably assume during the day.
Right.
I bet for evening we could, so I'll check on that.
Double check and if there is overlap with the uh, students needing to study, then it would be, be us to message that through the schools.
Yeah.
Them. The court order ends on June thirteenth.
So that, that may be exactly when they're having finals, so. Sorry to people at home, I'm just making notes. Okay. And as noted, KGD Architects won the bid for the reassessment project, which we will now call the facade courtyard project. And the program room, this, this predates even my appointment, but it seems like it should have been reported on previously. So I added it as an item, which is that the program room completed in two thousand twenty-two, really um or, or perhaps prior to two thousand twenty-two, serves the kinds of flexible need that's described in this bullet point. And I mean that um people really do use it as a drop-in social space for social gatherings and as an alternative work and study space. It's serving many multiple functions. The, the lack of um reservability is both a feature and a bug. It's exactly what makes it so accessible and open to anyone who's dropping in to use it. And we do see people in there um when the other rooms are all full. And again, this is not news, but it's only new to the along to the strategic plan update, which is that Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots have been available for checkout for um few months now to ensure that technology remains up to date and meets the needs of the community. So there were a couple more metrics and then I think that finishes the report. Earmark funding to develop the outdoor space. So we're talking about funding the facade and courtyard RFP. And my thinking is that upon development of the project plan and timeline, once we have a budget in place, then funding will likely include fifty percent state construction match for most or all of the components. And the only reason I say most is because some may not qualify for the matching grant, but most of them should. Um, and then depending on the size and scope of the project, we could either bond the remainder through public vote or a fundraising campaign through the Friends of the Library. And I'm not just spitballing that as an idea. The Friends are actually really interested in um, doing a fundraising project to address our needs. So fully furnish and decorate the teen rooms. Uh, I believe the teen room is fully furnished and decorated and that's, that predates me as well.
The patrons picked what went in there.
There you go.
I, I guess we're not letting the, the parents.
I. I did have to unfortunately report unfortunately that uh, the two firms that we initiated discussions with for the children's room. But um, I've been the bottleneck on this project. Uh, my limited time and attention has proved to be a temporary bottleneck. I really need to um, reprioritize and look at the status of those. So I'm uh, I regret having to report, but I do so honestly.
Okay, so time check, we're at eight thirty-seven. Need to pick up the pace.
Okay.
For everything.
So we've had a fair situation hold, so do you need to vote on anything? Sit down or?
Yes, do you mind?
Yeah.
Okay. Pam, do you want to kick us off in terms of, we've got a lot in terms of policies?
Yes. So uh, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to start with that the motion, the purpose of the motion is that New York State requires a review of all policies every five years. The policy committee has set goals of grouping the policies on the website for better clarity and visibility, ensuring that all policies reflect current laws, language, and library practices, maintaining policies that are current and relevant, avoiding duplication of policies. So the recommending stations, there are a number of, of motions, but maybe there could I don't know if there could be just one motion to address the state of the, the policies as they are now. Anyway, so I'm just gonna run through them quickly for you, okay? Eliminate the freestanding but balanced policy as it already exists in its entirety within the financial policy as section eight point D. Eliminate the freestanding gift policy as it already exists in its entirety within the financial policy as section eight point F. Change the name of library cards finds and fees policy to circulation policy. Eliminate the freestanding extended loan policy as it has been incorporated into the circulation policy. Eliminate the freestanding selection of materials policy as it has been incorporated into the circulation policy. Eliminate the freestanding deselection of library materials as, as it has been incorporated into the circulation policy. Eliminate the freestanding request for reconsideration policy as it has been incorporated into the circulation policy. Delete the policy on blogging from two thousand and eight as it is no longer relevant. Move the library programs procedure, which has been living under policies, which will be housed into the, it will go into the cultural programs job duties. And we're going to replace that, that whole thing with a new library program policy. So, board.
Just so, I'll, I'll second the motion. Now we can have discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Liz.
Um, I, I just, I wasn't sure what you just said, or I lost. Can you just repeat the last sentence of what you just said?
Yes, so under policies, it says library programs procedure.
Right.
And that's not a policy. So.
Is that our policy where we say that we approve the programs?
No, it's really like.
We say that somewhere else.
Right, we say that someplace.
So where do we say that? So I just wanna make sure we don't cancel that.
We're, well, we're not gonna cancel that. We're actually gonna make it front and center of that. Does that make sense? That, that this is more when the, what goes on right now, it's like, okay, so when we have a program, this is what we do. This is how we come. It, it's like instituting, once a program is, is done, um, how, how we, how we do it here. And that really falls under a job description much more than it's a policy. It doesn't read like a policy and it's not meant to be a policy. So yet it is housed under policies. So to answer you, we need, which I have sent to the board to review, a, a policy on programming. You know, how programs are decided, et cetera, et cetera. So um, I'm asking the board.
Uh, so I think that's, everything you're saying is fine, but I don't know that under open meetings law, we have done our work in terms of showing that appropriately for the public.
Same way.
So these things should all be, even the things we're canceling should be in a packet for the public's consumption. So and then it should say, this is, you know.
I, I think we can do that with the spreadsheet that we.
Okay, okay.
Which clearly indicates where there's duplication.
Okay.
Again, you can't policy.
And then it would go list for the public, it would go into, if we can put it into the board packet.
Actually put into the board packet, the policy you're canceling.
Correct.
And the policy that's replacing it. In the case of the finance policy that already exists, all you're asking is to cancel policy. Don't put the big policy in, cause it's if you don't need to, you're not changing that one, you're just canceling one. And if you want to show the page from the policy where it is replicated, that would be good.
Okay.
Um.
So I, I think we can easily move ahead with the ones that are duplicated within the financial policies.
So you could, but you're still moving ahead, it's not your public.
Excuse me? It, it is absolutely detailed for the public. The only thing I would suggest, Pam,
Uh huh.
With respect to the circulation policy, which is forthcoming.
It, it can't, it can't be approved yet.
Right. Or that we state that it is, that this cleanup will occur when it is incorporated into the situation policy rather than as it has been. See what I mean?
Oh, that all the other, that all the policies that are freestanding that are gonna go into circulation. Okay, and that could be in next month's board package, no problem. Okay. Okay.
Guys, I'm having trouble following. If I'm on the committee, I'm having trouble following. I don't think the public is following. And that's the problem is that you're, you're expecting too much of a public citizen and you're not. The job of the trustee is to show what we're doing and then do it, not to say, we're gonna do something and then we'll show you later.
Well, this is a simple um quest for approval with respect to cleaning up the structure of the policies. This isn't a request with respect to the language of the policies. So I do think we can proceed as long as we clarify, you know, for example, with circulation once.
Correct, um. I understand everything you're saying, Liz. Okay. Okay.
But that's okay. You guys do what you want.
Um. Okay. Putting this aside, I, I would like to make a motion to pass the lactate, moving on. I'd like to make a motion to pass the lactation policy that has been in the board policy.
Second that, for, forgive me. I would like to.
I don't know.
Agreement cleanup, because you're going to address the circulation policy in our next, probably our next meeting, right?
Okay, yes, absolutely. Okay, so the motion to clean up. It's not that. I have to come up with the wording and I just don't have it right now. So, so we'll, we'll have to.
Shall we?
Yes, I'd like, I.
And the blogging.
Yeah, so if, make a motion to approve the deleting of the blogging policy. Okay. Only, okay.
And again, avoidance of the duplication of the um, policies that are doubly stated under both the um financial policy as well as on a standard basis. All approved?
Okay.
I, I'm three. Not in favor?
Not in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Jen, go ahead.
Obstante.
All right, Brian, one more second. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the lactation policy.
Any discussion?
When did we put that on the web for the public?
Um, well.
In the past, and yeah, we're good, solid.
Okay.
All in favor? I.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the internet. This is our social, our social media policy has been in the packet.
I second the proposal.
Thank you.
Any discussion? This one is also on market. On a red line basis since it's an update.
Okay.
Lot of hard work into this, thank you.
Um, did you do it in all in favor?
All in favor?
Okay. Thank you.
Similarly, your whistle blow policy.
Um, can't do the whistle blow policy yet. But has to get sent, that, right, that was one that has been sent to the board and then has to go to B S K, right, okay. So Liz, when you get a chance, the board was sent a whole bunch of policies to take.
I saw that, but to me, and we aren't giving the public time, I'm not prepared either. So when you see me not prepared, it's not that I didn't read the emails, but it's that I didn't feel the public was prepared and that's who I'm representing.
Okay, thank you.
Few more motions. Um, moving to building and grounds, I moved that the board approved the drafted RFP for the development and implementation of a turnkey solution to upgrade the audio visual system in the Jaffa Library Theater for release to targeted bidders by the library director.
I seconded. Uh huh.
Any discussions?
Bob, can you tell us a little bit about what went into developing the RFP, how we got to this point?
Sure, um, we started with a vision statement of how the theater space is supposed to perform besides library programs, um, really putting into words what kind of uses it sees in terms of meetings, public meetings. Um, Zoom mediated meetings, broad live recording for live broadcast programs, um, and outside groups that are in space. So the technical needs, um we have some known issues that we put right into the RFP and some other areas where we're really looking more for consulting. So we named that we need a new projector, we, we know that. Um, and then we also named that we look, we're looking for a assisted dialogue loop.
Um, I, I apologize. I know Brian has to leave. We get to get through a few, and we've um, considered this schedule in the past. I'd like to move forward. We discussed this in March and April, our regular meetings. Um, so thank you for that. And I think it's very thorough RFP. So thank you for your work with the link in that regard.
Was there outreach done to any of the individuals that we gave names to Bob directly? The day after our November or December meeting, we emailed him, we gave him lots of names and contacts to inform this RFP. And the question was driving at that is that did all the people we asked you to consult with before you put this together, were they all consulted? Did you have those conversations?
Discussion when you left the March meeting early. All in favor? I. Three. Move the not in favor and abstain. I'm abstaining, okay. Move ahead. Okay. Two more, Brian, apologies. I moved that the board approved the director to accept the maintenance proposal charge of seventeen fifty for pleasant film glass to strip off the old deteriorated degraded purple window film from the five floor to ceiling windows in the children's area facing the children's areas courtyard and apply new colorless U V protected film and direct him to schedule the project as soon as possible. One comment, this follows a successful implementation of this approach with respect to the two windows flanking the theater entrance just outside. Do I have a second? Any discussion? It's actually within Bob's approval anyway, so it's presented as a favor, regardless of our needs. Okay, all in favor? All right. Yes. Finally, finally, we'll move forward in that regard. Okay, last motion um that I have for building and grounds. I moved that the board approved the director deciding and accepting its proposal on charge of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars plus refrigerant costs for Joe Lombardo Heating and Plumbing of Rockland to replace a failed compressor and direct him to schedule the project as soon as possible. One comment, this is the one mentioned in the April twenty-fourth meeting where we approved a greater cost, but agreed that we would continue to press for a third proposal, which did come in lower as we'd hoped. Second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? I. Okay. Any other motion you need, Brian, for personnel?
Uh, yeah, I have the appointment of a, this is part of the director's personal report. The appointment of a library page uh, Zoya Nabil to a vacancy at the rate of the area's minimum wage of fifteen dollars per hour.
What are we paying our refugees with our?
Most of them are making a little bit more than that, only because they've been here a little bit longer. But my recommendation is the library page is an entry level job. No prior work experience needed. It doesn't even require a high school diploma. And so minimum wage is always an appropriate wage for a library page.
Pam, can I, vice president handles the personnel motions, can I ask you to phrase that into a motion and we'll vote?
Sure, um, a motion to approve Zoya Nabil as a library page um, at fifteen dollars an hour.
To fill our.
To fill our vacancy.
Started Monday. Do you need a?
I don't have a start date, no. We're still waiting on the paperwork.
Mm-hmm.
Well, as of today. I second the motion. All in favor? I, I.
I wanted just to explain, I thank you for passing the motion. Um, I understand that I am the appointing authority, but every wage or salary requires the board's approval, so it's really the wage.
You're the appointing security, we donate to you, so technically it's us, but yes, it's you.
Right.
Any others?
No, but we'll, none that I'm aware of, but we'll still have um quorum after Brian leaves.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologize for.
Can we return to the director's report and the highlights that you have touched on?
Well, very, very briefly before I turn the floor over to Robin, is that um it's happy and it's sad, but we had the uh retirement announcement of Rebecca Rogan, who's been our head of adult services for a few years now. And so it's happy for her and sad for us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we have the end of the month and she stepped away on a previously planned vacation. Um, so she'll be back in time for her going away party.
So her last day is?
Side thirty-one.
Thank you.
May thirty-first.
Thank you.
And is it too early to speak about transition and your plan going forward?
It's too early to announce them, yeah, great. Uh, well, you know, what I can say is that um there is internal interest and that I expect we will be able to make an appointment internally, a promotion internally. Um, but that it hasn't been announced yet on internal staff communications. So I need to, to make that announcement. They all see it coming, of course. There, we have this person retiring, but I need to make it clear that we'll consider internal promotions. And then if the um internal promotion creates another vacancy, then there will be part-time and part-timer interest in a full-time position as well. So the cups and saucers sort of inherent in civil service hiring process. The pieces are in place, the interest is there, so.
Thank you.
And quickly enough to have the hiring underway.
Hiring of the, of the temporary replacement for Chantel Pena. I have a list of candidates that, that needs to be canvassed. Um, and for the secretary position, we're waiting on civil service to actually call it a secretary, and then it would come back for the board's approval um for the creation of the position.
Why is, that's not a standard position?
Secretary to library director is a standard position.
But they have to validate.
But we we don't write off to civil service and say, we need a secretary to library director. We have to describe the duties of a position and let civil service decide the duties that you've just described. That will, we will recommend a secretary to library director. And then we can say, thank you, civil service. And then we can say, thank you, civil service, and have the board approve the creation of that vacancy. Once the vacancy is there, then I can ask for a list of, if they have a list and canvas that list. If there isn't a list, then we can, uh, as you know, break the list and hire from outside, usually a provisional appointment, but sometimes directly into the position, depending on whether it's competitive or non competitive.
Um, anything else you want to touch on before we turn to Robin? Oh, um, you had mentioned the website. Can, how briefly present at our future meetings and?
No, he has a standing.
Oh, she has an evening.
As long as the meetings are Mondays, she has a standing, uh, personal thing, yeah. We can return to me af- after Robin, um, to give the website update.
Sure.
Um, well, as I already reported previously, twenty seventh, the contract was signed and accepted. Um, on May third, we were introduced to the library markets, project manager, project lead, and asked to assemble a core team of people assigned to certain areas. We already know that Tao Gwen is the, uh, is our lead point. But other staff members to consult with on the project include Mercy Garland, representing the children's uh, department and, oh, excuse me, I've read this out of order. It actually includes, uh, Julianne Palesko from the children's department and Amy Berger from adults. And other staff to be consulted for specific needs include Mercy Garland, Chantel Pena, uh, representing Chantel has been serving as our strongest contact with W L S's I T department. So makes a natural point for that, uh. During Chantel's leave, of course, it will be me. Um, the core team has been assigned certain areas, which I could go into detail, but it's a pretty late meeting. Um, the kickoff meeting is scheduled, will be scheduled for the week of the seventeenth. And the library board has identified following goals for the website redesign, which include patron feedback for programs, marketing strategies to improve our overall communications and commitment to long range planning goals. So those will all be, um, prominently considered during the construction of the new website.
And when you say kickoff, does that mean five month tense? Sort of October, we're looking at finalization?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to be, um, about a five month project. So if we kick off the week of May seventeenth, we're hoping for a new website revealed to the public five months by Halloween.
Uh, so in terms of kickoff, if you can think about a way to integrate Brian as chair of the communications committee and, um, perhaps by then we'll have our first associate um, who may have interest in the committee as well. People should be immediately seeing that project. And Brian, in fact, when he choose to transfer the chair role since he took on with Davis Department.
Um, Robin's looking at me like I may have more to my director's report. But I don't. So, uh, Robin's been invited to present on.
I'm for a chair that way I can see all of doing, so be the block screen angel.
In the red chair. All the time.
Thank you for joining us. Thank you for inviting. Just want to talk a little bit about we do in the department and we might, but feel free to interrupt or wait for the end. Um, so I kind of broke this up into a few different sections, um, to talk briefly about the services that we're providing in the library right now. Um, that's our regular, you know, readers advisory reference, our in-person support of folks who are trying to use our materials, trying to use our space and these those things. But it also includes other things that happen in the space like, um, art displays, our real life posters, our bibliographies that help people themselves navigate the space. Um, we have a really consistent focus on an inclusive collection as we were talking about from with the strategic plan. So we're always working on updating our lists. Um, we've kind of overhauled our nonfiction. We are doing spot audits on all of our, um, bibliographies. And we've been working on revamping the world languages collection. Um, so that's an ongoing process. But something that we're really happy with how it's coming along so far. Um, we are at a pretty busy room most days. I don't know if y'all have been in the room around storytime hours, but it's it's an exciting time, exciting place to be. Um, but we've also found that there are some really valuable services that came about during the pandemic that we have continued. Um, so our Zee Storytime is still successful, our book clubs are sometimes, um, online and sometimes in person. And that's been actually a really nice fit for some of our things we use. Um, some of our information sessions for events like the Chappaqua Challenge, we can do online and that puts into people's schedules a lot better. Our, um, both, we have both in-person and email book bundles to suit various people's needs. And for example, something like a Grab and Book Craft, which we'd never done before the pandemic, those are, are really successful and particularly around a vacation. For example, when people have different times that they're available. Um, that segues necessarily into talking about our programming. We have story test four days a week, um, as well as, uh, monthly Saturday storytimes. We have storytimes that are designed for age specific groups as well as for wider age range, which allows folks to bring siblings or for groups to come together or just to kind of fit with people's schedules better, because you know, half times are always changing. People always have different needs. Um, we also have a lot of other successful early childhood programming, in particular, um, things that incorporate movement, things that incorporate science and art. We have a, a room room series, um, where we do, we play with vehicles, that kind of stuff. Um, and we're still trying to find our footing for our elementary age programming, um, since returning to our space and since people are much more out in the world. So we definitely had some very successful programs, but we've also had some that were, um, less intended than we had expected. And so we're trying to figure out what, what people's needs are right now and really try to find those and meet them. Um, if you're having some failures, you are innovating, right? Yeah, um, and we're, we're certainly not finding all the, all the like parameters of what we could be doing. So we're working on. Um, and we've also had some really successful large scale programs. So Big Truck Day, we had over eleven hundred people here. Um, our Leonard Dear program has been going really well. It was wonderful to have it in person again, the Bubble Truck, the Ice Cream Social. I hope everyone can attend because those are legit like block parties. They're a lot of fun. Um, and we've also been getting really great feedback from our story walk, which are, they're often posted in Getty Park. We do one town, you know, we move them around. Those have been really successful. Um, we've also been expanding our community partners. This is fortunately in alignment with our strategic plan, which is nice. Um, so just in the next two months, we have programs that are collaborations with the Town of Newcastle Committee on Race Equity and Inclusion, the LGBTQ plus committees um, have collaborations with the schools, including our annual summer reading visits and our first ever Chappaqua Schools three K open house, which we'll be holding at the library, which we're very excited about. We've been collaborating with school P T A committees and helping them with projects, um. We have a collaboration with the Town of Newcastle Senior Center, Chappaqua Garden Club, Chappaqua Children's Book Festival, the farmer's market. I think that might create.
So great.
Um, and of course, you know, changing relationships with the preschools, with other schools. Yeah, so we're busy, um, but we're always looking to strengthen those relationships and to forge new ones. So we're, we're open to partners wherever we can find them. Um, looking forward, there are just a few things that I want to highlight. Um, we really are hoping to have design and furniture that supports different means in our space. Particularly to target, target those older elementary age students that I think we're missing in our programming partly because they're not spending as much time in our space overall. Um, and also to kind of improve study and sort of small group activity in that way.
Um, may I interject one time here? So, um, you and Bob perhaps have already discussed this, but when we had our first meeting with K G D with respect to, you know, what we're now calling this on, Core Guards, um, the we talked about the potential inclusion of Susan because we talked to them about potentially, you know, our interest in design for the children's area, um, and furniture, et cetera, and um, they asked, we stressed and they wanted a focus group um, that included staff, um, to hear about needs as they think about creating plans. And they suggested the addition of Susan to that initial meeting. And we said, whoa, 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 you know, we haven't yet committed, you know? Um, and they said they absolutely realize that they're just going to use the efficiency of that first meeting to hear everything that's important to you. And then they'll take that away and, and come back with a proposal, so.
That should, should be. Yeah, I would, I would usually have to be in any meeting.
Yeah.
That's moving in that direction. Yeah, thank you. Um, so another thing we're looking at is, um, how we can sort of, um, make further and better use of our, um, early childhood space. We're hoping to do, to add some more interactive elements. Um, maybe something like rotating installations that would allow for there to be something kind of different every few months for kids to try in the room. Um, so we, that, that's an open project. Um, we're also planning to start in the near future year. Um, once we have the budget to buy them, um, in-house circulation of tablets, which will allow us to bring back that element that is definitely popular with folks, but also not have to give over an entire space in the room to their use. Um, we still need a public catalog, so that's one of our kind of open questions for the design is where we can fit in a place so that people can actually do that looking up on their own. Um, and they can really learn to use the library in that deeper way where they're really becoming also self sufficient. In addition, we hope to wanting to talk to us. Um, and one kind of ongoing concern that we have is that each elementary school in town no longer have, um, certified librarians in their school libraries.
All, all three?
All three. They do all have seats in those positions. There are, there are folks in school library, but they are not certified librarians. Um, and so that's something that is, um, a challenge for us to figure out how the, how we're communicating with everyone. Um, hopefully at a district level, but also at a school level. Um, the people in those positions are, are lovely and friendly and, and we have found them, you know, really easy to work with. Um, but we're not always using the same language sometimes, um, and we would like to be able to offer our support, um, for school librarians in those positions.
I didn't know that. So are our schools no longer buying our children books for the purposes of cert, like, reading or?
I mean, they have people in those positions, so they're, I, but I don't know what their collection development looks like in this place.
They can't be buying. They don't have librarians, so.
They can, they can. Yeah, I, I'll be honest, I don't know a lot about.
I mean, I don't think you.
Teachers. And so that's true. And it's not a good recommendation, right? Practice.
They didn't ask us.
Have they come to you for, for book selections?
Um, the, the folks who are in those positions now.
Okay.
Um, we do collaborate with them.
Mm hmm.
Um, and as I say, we have found them all really pleasant to work with. Um, I just want to highlight it as something that I think a lot of folks are not necessarily aware of. Um, and as a thing that has, you know, had some tapped on our, our school library collaboration. I think that's it from me, unless you have any further questions, thinking you would want me to speak more to?
I had a question. Curious, you know, we used to have an area with computers and that's where the kids learned proper posture and attending to what they're doing and so if we're now taking that out and we're doing tablets, is it then be, it's on the parent to put that in a appropriate postural setting for the child? Or is the librarian assisting and setting them up somewhere? Uh, how does that actually work?
Be honest, I'm aware that the posture was part of the purpose of that early childhood computer area previously.
I, I don't, I mean, I assumed because there's seats and you sit your kid and you tell them what they're doing, that that's part of the practice of getting in a routine of attending, um, on a screen. Now, obviously, kids have a lot of practice with that, but I think, um, I would just ask that you go back and think about whether you're fulfilling the full mission of what you need to be doing in terms of, um, are we responsibly using technology with the little kids? Um, and I would use that again with like, I'm not sure if we really want a Zoom for the under two crowd, um, as a public library in Chappaqua, New York. Uh, because I think that comes back to responsibility and where we want kids, we want them here. And certainly there are Zoom options. Um, so that's something I would just, those are two things I would take back. I don't have the answers. The third being related to those that, um, I, you know, I can't, I don't know that we're necessarily delivering against the specific sub-goals within children. Sure, we have lots of children coming in, but I would like, if I could break out on this, the, the next time you run the report to show us the age groups for the different programs, because then we can start to see, oh, you know, we, we have, you know, um, so for example, my nine year old, occasionally there's a K through six program that he could go to, but there's very few, if not anything, that's specific to the third and fourth grade that I'm seeing. Um, so that's something that would show up better if, for us as a board, if you put, you know, who's attend, like, what, what the age range of the program is next to the program, because otherwise no one can see.
For tall, yeah, it's visible in every calendar, yeah.
So we're at a board meeting, this is our regular scheduled monthly board meeting, so this is where everything that we want people to see and evaluate on this board comes. So when the new trustees get here, I would prefer them to be able to see in the board packet with the statistics of who attended which program, that movers and shakers is the, you know, the toddler crowd and what that age range is and that the, you know, that the, that, you know, whoever you were inviting, so that we understand.
Yeah. Um, to briefly respond to the other two questions that I think you raised, um, in terms of, um, whether we are, are meeting needs appropriately with, um, sort of mentoring around technology, I think that it does make the most sense. I think it makes the most sense, um, to encourage, um, use of the types of technology that kids are actually using and that frankly adults are actually using. And so tablets are used in far more use with those ages than like a desktop computer is at this point. So I think giving them the capacity to actually learn on those devices makes a lot more sense. And the in-house circulation, actually, we're hoping, um, will increase what is, um, adult and child mentoring, um, around technology. So that is, actually is the best practice. Um, the Association for Library Service to Children has an entire white paper on, on how, um, libraries can mentor adults and children to use technology together. Um, and so if you're doing in-house circulation, instead of there being an area that some of the time was actually kind of challenging for the adults to fit into along with the kids, we're able to give them together a device that would be checked out to the adults for them to go off and actually work with together, um, and to provide support for what we think will allow for joint engagement with the technology.
And then again, that also speaks to the kind of furniture that people could sit together, an adult and a child could sit together.
Yeah.
And do it together.
So I think some, I mean, uh, when I was in there, I wasn't using computers because I don't want my kids on computers. But I, I know from other parents that it was helpful to put a kid by a computer and look for books. So just think it through.
I, I genuinely believe that we have. I understand that it won't necessarily serve the exact same needs, um, or serve them in the exact same way. But I actually think that it is going to serve more needs and it is going to serve at least some of those significantly better. But I actually think that it is going to serve more needs and it is going to serve at least some of those significantly better.
Okay.
Um, and in terms of a concern around whether or not we should be providing Zooms that children under the age of two attend, one of the things that we recommend, if people are interested, is actually that their baby face them um and that the screen be behind them. So one of the things that's really nice about a Zoom storytime is that it provides people who can't come to the library for a variety of reasons. They may not have a ride. Someone may be sick. They may have another kid who's taking a nap right now, whatever it is, it provides them a little more flexibility. But it also means that they are getting exposure to a lot of our storytime practices. It's not exactly the same as being here in person, but it gives them the opportunity. Um, and so if it's a concern about, you know, screen time, that kind of thing, that's what we recommend, that you actually have the screen here. Sorry, I'm gonna crush your phone and your tile here. And so then you're facing both of them, but they're still hearing the songs and doing all.
That's helpful. Um, it's great. Sorry, maybe more can participate. Yeah. Well, great. Any other questions? So that was excellent. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any last additions?
Uh, no, I was just reviewing my full director's report. And it looks like I covered everything except for the disaster plan update, which uh was included. I thought it was ready last month, except I learned that it wasn't. And we made the further changes. Now, I saw an email where the question was, who participated? This was not intended to be anything other than an updating of what of the current contact information of what's already there. So please don't let the perfect be the enemy of the best. This is not an overhaul of the plan, just an updating. Otherwise, people are gonna, in an emergency, call a former director or a former facilities contractor.
Right.
So that's my answer to that question. I know not enough people were consulted. It's not intended to be a.
Is there a date that it has to be overhauled?
No, but it's an internal document.
Okay.
For staff, for new hires, for active staff, for new trustees.
Okay, well, we should review annually.
It should be.
It should be an annual thing because it is literally the same, the library. So once a year would be good, but to Bob's point, sure, it can be overhauled, but it's it's not in bad shape. It's just, it's always it can be better and it and and we should definitely continue to look at it. And perhaps to the point of the policy direction that we're going, when we do overhaul it, we should, the contact information should live separate from the actual, so it should be in the plan, but it should actually say, this is a example, the act, you know, of the most recent as of the date, but somewhere at the circ desk where we keep all the active, active, actives.
Hmm, okay.
Right, or even it could, it could be a a a disaster plan. But all of the contact information could be one final page of the plan so that it can be updated all at once.
Right.
So refer to people by title or role and then have that.
So so what you do is you say the contacts for the disaster plan are located at XYZ location. Usually we use circ desk.
Yeah.
That's where it's located and it's referenced in the actual safety plan and populated as current the day we approve it.
Yeah.
Then a year later, we could revise that. But if like someone, if there's a change internally, the one at circ can be updated without coming to the team.
I agree, that'll be a more effective.
Mm hmm.
Um, structure.
I think it would also be useful, you know, with the staff element that's built into the new website to see if we can incorporate some of this.
The disaster plan into policy.
Especially all the contact lists.
Right.
So the discovery for library aware is one of the documents we want to make sure we give them is the disaster plan in their discovery. Uh, we would also.
Market, yeah.
We would also want to give them our last strategic plan. You know, so I I don't know if there's a list of all the discovery, if Tao wrote up a list of all the discovery documents she's giving them, uh, we could review that for you.
And that was the only part of my director's report that wasn't um already reported upon elsewhere in the meeting.
I will touch on this further in um subsequent meeting, but one of the things Bob and I discussed and I will score further this part of the reason grounds. He was taking a B room that's outside of his office, possibly it's from resort, user door elsewhere, um can convert that to a public conference room. That could be available for people. So. Um, with that, if nothing else, I'll move for all the motion for adjournments. It's now nine one two two. Five a second. Now. All in favor? Thank you all very much.